If you can't find a seat, I ask that you go out into the atrium and watch the meeting on the monitor outside. If you can't find anywhere to sit, you can't stand up against the wall, the monitor will be on for you to watch the meeting in the atrium.
The three heads outside in. I understand. I understand.
Go out, I'll find them first. Don't let them speak. You're in. You can raise your hand if you want to raise from the floor. But Joel may have a better idea.
But Joel, they say we're district. Why don't you bring it up?
Joel.
What? That's your. I'm ready.
This is a regular meeting of the Mobile City Council, Tuesday, June 23rd. Please stand for our invocation led by Dr. Blake Newsom, Senior Pastor at Dolphin Way Baptist Church, and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Do you want me to pray here? Lord Jesus, we need you. Lord Jesus, we need you in our nation. We need you in our state. We need you in our community. Lord, we pray that you would move. We pray that you would move in our lives as individuals. We pray, God, that you would do your spiritual work in our hearts, in our lives, and then through our lives. Lord, we pray for healing. God, we look to you, Jesus. You are the great physician. You are the God who heals. And, Lord, we look to you for healing. We look to you for healing, for unity. We look to you for healing, Lord, in our individual lives, our families, and this community. We look for healing, Lord, in all aspects of our lives, most importantly and most specifically, spiritually. God, we thank you for what you have done for us on the cross, and we pray, Lord. We pray, God, that what you have done on our behalf would have ramifications in our lives and in our community. Lord, I pray for wisdom for our leaders. I pray, God, that you would give them a sense of discernment. I pray that you would give them a sense of what to do, when to do it, and how to do it, Lord. And I pray, God, that you would always bring them back to the most important, why they do what they do, Lord. And I pray, God, at the heart of that would be to honor you, and, Lord, to expand your kingdom here on earth. Lord, thank you for loving us. Thank you for blessing us. And I pray, God, that we would truly experience and walk in the blessings that you have provided for us each and every day. May we know you better today and each day, Lord. And we pray all of this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. President Manzi.
Here.
Vice President Small.
Here.
Councilmember Richardson.
Here.
Councilmember Williams.
Here.
Councilmember Davis.
Councilmember Rich.
Here.
Councilmember Gregory.
Here.
Statement of rules.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We first would ask that you turn off or silence all of your electronic devices before or upon entering the council meeting. Any person desiring to address the council must first sign in indicating the resolution, ordinance, appeal, or public hearing agenda item before entering the meeting. When addressing the council, the speaker must clearly state for your name, for the record, rather, your name and address. Any person desiring to speak to the council on a non-agenda item must contact the City Clerk's office on the Thursday preceding the Tuesday in which you'd like to speak by 2:00 p.m. The subject here she wishes to address must be identified and be pertinent to City of Mobile business. Any person who hasn't given proper notice to the Clerk's office and wishes to speak on a non-agenda item will not be allowed to address the council. All speakers are granted five minutes. A bell will sound to indicate the end of four minutes. One minute remains for summarizing. The second bell indicates that all of your time has expired. When addressing the council, we ask that there be no personal address to any individual council member. All of your statements are to be made to myself, who serves as chair, and any subsequent council member who wishes to be recognized will have that opportunity. To maintain decorum, there will be no undue applause and/or public outcry allowed. Those are the rules for this particular meeting, and we're certainly appreciative of your interest in your municipal government.
Approval of minutes of June 16th. Somu.
Second.
Been properly moved in second in the discussion. Am not all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Communications from the mayor.
Good morning.
Good morning.
It's good to see everybody this morning. Yesterday, I had the opportunity to go to Prattville to meet with eight of the ten large, the big city mayors. We took with us our finance directors and with our chiefs of police and Director Barber. We had a briefing, had a greeting and a welcome from the governor, and then we had a presentation from the FBI regarding current events. But it was a very opportune time for us to share information, especially with the finance directors all getting together. Every city is under the gun right now when it comes to the loss of revenue because of the COVID virus. I think Mr. West is going to tell you some information regarding the city finances and what other cities are looking at from their budgeting standpoint. We also had an opportunity for our police chiefs to interact with each other, to discuss best practices and things that they have found to be successful in, you know, moving our cities forward. So, anyway, all in all, a very productive meeting. Now, I see Ann Rambo sitting in the audience. As my understanding, Ann has worked for the city for 35?
Actually, the first year and a half in California, I'd say so, almost 37.
We'll say, we'll give you 37. Okay. And she's with her husband, Rick, but I think that we should all stand and give Ann a big round of applause for all that she's done for the city. Anybody that's had a special event in the last several years has either had it organized and orchestrated by Ann, and then, of course, I mentioned her husband, Rick, who also had a long career with the city. So, thank you both for being here, and thank you for your service. That's it.
And along those lines, Ms. Rambo, we do have a special.
We do.
Ms. Rich.
And I wish I was down here to give you a big hug, but we have our parameters today. And it's my pleasure to read this on behalf of the city council and the mayor. The City of Mobile has been incredibly lucky to have had Ms. Ann Rambo serving our citizens for the past 37 years. Whereas after starting her career with the Mobile Recreation Department as a fitness specialist in 1983, Ms. Rambo went on to serve in various roles throughout the department before honing in on her true talent, pulling off world-class events for our citizens. And whereas, under her leadership as a special events manager, we have provided our residents with some of the most beloved and memorable events, including the Lowdah Art Walk, Brown Bag in Beenville, Market in the Park, Friday Night Flicks, Kids' Days, July 4th Celebrations, Dolphin Street Beer Festival, The Lighting of the Tree, Holiday Market, Christmas Kids' Day, Elfa Palooza, and Moon Pie Over Mobile.
Yay!
And whereas, in 2005, the city also smartly entrusted to her our sister cities program to increase global cooperation, promote cultural understanding, and stimulate economic development with Mobile's 15 sister cities. And whereas, we are eternally grateful for the incredible work of Mrs. Ann Rambo in support of our cities and our citizens. Now, therefore, the members of the Mobile City Council and the mayor do hereby proclaim Tuesday, June 23rd, 2020 as Ms. Ann Rambo Day in Mobile and urge all our citizens to join us in thanking Ann for her tireless efforts on behalf of the city. And applauding her efforts is somebody pretty important right next to her that a lot of us recognize. Our past director parks, her husband, Mr. Rambo. Thank you for being here. It's very exciting. And we do have the proclamation, the hard copy. Great. All right.
Mr. President. Mr. President.
Yes, ma'am.
If I might, just want to say congratulations to Ann on quite a career. I had the opportunity to work with Ann on the administrative side for a while, and it became very clear very quickly that if you want something done, and done well, you go to Ann Rambo. I mean, she is the best at what she does. So, congratulations, Ann, on your career, and we are going to miss you terribly here at the city.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
And let me just add to that. Ann has also traveled around the world with us. She was in Japan with us, making sure we were at the right place at the right time, making sure, because we were changing cultures and some things we could do in America that they would frown on in other countries, Ann was there to tell us, "No. You can't do that." So, we just appreciate Ann when those who had great doubt about whether or not the Moon Pie was going to be of success, Ann was giving it all of her vigor to make sure it was a success. And she played a role in us having the right persons on that stage that could generate revenue, fill up the beds. So, I give all kudos to you, Ann. You've done an outstanding job. We appreciate all you have done for us.
And I just would echo those sentiments. I know for the last seven years that there was an event that needed organizing. Ms. Rambo, along with Greg Cipian and his very large contingent of hard-working city employees, have always done an outstanding, an outstanding job. And I appreciate that, and I hope and pray you have a very prosperous and long-lived retirement, and that you stay active, and thank you for all you've done here in the City of Mobile. Now, we have, we've been notified that there is a delegation of citizens here from, I believe, the Halftime Sports Bar that would like to bring an issue and get an understanding relative to some of their interactions with our law enforcement. They did not have the opportunity to sign in by the Thursday preceding the Tuesday in which they'd like to speak. But we have brought their concerns to the attention of Mayor Stimson, to our Public Safety Director, and to Chief Batiste, along with the councilman for that area, Councilman Joel Davis. That's Mr. Jackson there with the sports bar. I know DJ Rodsky is here with them, along with several others. And Chief and Public Safety Director, if you all could engage with them, you know, we have rules relative to speaking. You would have had to have signed in on the Thursday preceding the Tuesday before you'd like to speak by 2:00 p.m. And so, you all are not able to do that, but the Chief and the Public Safety Director are both here and willing to discuss the matters that you all have on the outside there. So, DJ Rodsky, if you wanted to go with them, okay, good. Okay. We didn't want anyone to feel that we were not wanting to be sensitive to the issues. We've got both of them here. Appreciate the mayor facilitating that so that that discussion can take place. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Mr. Richardson.
I'll just go a little further to say, one of the main complaints was that the Police Department was blocking his business, and they stopped him from going onto his own property, claiming it was related to public safety. I don't agree with that, and I hope they can work something out there. We don't have to be on nobody's property unless somebody has called the law and a crime is being committed. And sometimes you get calls from people who don't want you to do what you are doing, and you are not doing anything illegal. So, over a sustained period of time, setting up offices on somebody else's property and closing down that business, I don't agree with it, and I hope they can work it out.
Mr. President.
Mr. Davis.
This location is in District 5, and I've received a number of complaints about large crowds of people gathering in the parking lot where this business is located, and doing all kinds of things they are either entitled to, and some of which they're not entitled to do under our law, and being there until 2:00 or 3:00 o'clock in the morning. Now, I have every interest in this gentleman being able to operate his business in a lawful manner, but the people that are, you know, his customers need to be inside his business, and we don't need 200 or 300 people congregating outside the business all hours of the night. So, the police are going to go out there. I talked to Director Barber, and I believe Director Barber and Chief Batiste are going to talk to them about ways and means of reaching an accommodation with respect to their concerns, but we can't have continued gigantic crowds of people hanging around all hours of the night out there. Thank you.
The only way he's going to know that you're getting the complaints from your constituents is if you and he are in pretty regular communication. So, I'd hope you all would share some contact information so that as you get complaints, he can be responsive to those complaints.
Mr. President.
Mr. Richardson.
My final complaint, my final remarks on that is they're hanging out in the street downtown Mobile all times of night in the wee hours of the morning with liquor in the So, I'm saying for people to be on somebody's lot until the wee hours of the morning unless they're making a lot of loud noise is not illegal. Gathering is not illegal. Now, people riding by may not like it. Illegal is that if they're selling drugs, if they're fighting, doing something else, that's illegal. If they're in that lot, in the lot itself, is not illegal activity. Hanging around is not illegal activity because they hang around every night downtown in the street.
Well, that's public streets.
That's exactly right. It's public streets.
And private property is even more.
It's two entirely different situations.
No. If you're on my property, and I allow you to come on my property, then that's my business. If he owns the property and he's permitting them, you can't go on property, you cannot go on private property without somebody's consent. But if the property owner allows you to come on, and you're standing on the lot, not doing nothing illegal, that is not illegal activity. Now, some people might not like to see it. They ride by, and they think something's going on, and it puts fear in their heart. It is not illegal activity.
Well, we've got the Public Safety Director, the Police Chief, and the owner of the business on the outside, and we're hopeful, we're really hopeful, that they'll be able to come to an understanding, and hopefully this issue won't persist. Madam City Clerk?
Monthly finance report.
Good morning.
As Mayor mentioned earlier, we have had some difficult conversation with mayors and finance directors about our budgetary challenges for this year, and also probably more importantly going into 2021. To preface some remarks about that, I'll tell you that May's revenues are in the actual report. We'll go on the website once this report is concluded. Our May sales taxes, which, as you know, are April transactions, collecting in April by businesses paid over less than May, were $1,238,000 below budget. When you combine the sales tax losses with some of our more fixed losses from closures, and the largest of those are the Cruz Center, Invention Center, Civic Center, the Sanger Theater, our revenue losses are about $3 million, tad over $3 million from March, which, as you may recall, was about the same for prior month. The good news is those two months have come in below, but we have protected without any data, you know, about three months ago. Bad news is it's still, you know, it's still a loss. Mobile is positioned to withstand those losses, we believe, through the end of this whole year because of our reserves. So, we should be okay in addition to where our reserves are. The city has taken some steps. The administration has to tamp down spending. The travel ban for employees is still in place, and we've been very deliberate about replacing employees, doing so where there's a retirement or a departure from the city from a critical position of importance, mission critical, if you will, they're being replaced, but other hiring is on pause for right now. We're cautiously optimistic about 2020, and some of that optimism is conditional, mainly to two primary conditions. One, that there are no future state orders reclosing businesses because of a surge in infections. No one can predict whether we will have such a thing happen or not. We are optimistically predicting that we will not. The other condition is that the economic challenges that we're facing really does not, not just locally, but also statewide nationally, do not precipitate a structural economic downturn that we have any of the profile of what happened in 2008, 2010. We believe most of our economic downturn is in the service industry, which has a propensity to be more elastic and bounce back when conditions improve, but we're keeping a, you know, a look on that. Our real challenge is going to project revenue for 2021. Right now, we are in the midst of projecting. We are present suggesting that we will have flat revenue in 2021. We've had an overperformance, as you know, of the first seven months or so of 2020. So, predicting a flat budget for 2021 means we are looking at depressing revenues somewhat, but projecting a flat revenue to correspond with a flat budget. We are asking all of our departments to live within their actual expenditures currently in 2020, asking them to adjust their budgets to do so. I do want to give you some insight into what's happening statewide. We don't know that all cities are protected. Not all of them have completed their efforts. You may have caught the AL.com article this morning. Birmingham appears to have the largest challenges in front of it. They're actually projecting a 20% in revenues, and therefore their budget for 2021 from 2020. 20% is real severe. That's $73 million in revenue that they are having to track in their budget. Montgomery is at 9%. That's still a large amount for Montgomery. As you may remember from some media reports, Montgomery already had a challenge before COVID hit, with their revenues. If you remember, they tried to enact an occupational tax that was reversed by the state legislature. So, 9% is less than Birmingham's base, and their landscape was a lot tougher to deal with. So, and then other cities are going from where we are predicting flat to predicting percentage cuts in their revenue or their budget. So, we have a, you know, certain challenge in front of us, not as tough a challenge as some cities, but even remain flat when you have employment pressures on things like costs of health care and pension contributions that are increasing each year. It's still a tough job to get done, but that's what we've got to do. So, we'll be talking about this more in the weeks to come to prepare the page with submission. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
I have a question. Did you all talk about unemployment numbers in our state, or do you know what it is in our county?
We have a trailing unemployment. We get reports about a month, and so the past we had was in the midst of enough of unemployment, which was at 16.7%.
Yeah, that's high.
Now, we are undoubtedly going to benefit from the surge in employment that occurred last month. If you recall, unemployment was at 2.5 million nationwide. I think we get our share of that, again, of unemployment was in the service industry, and those employees all back to work.
I mean, because the people's confidence, since we're sales tax generated, you know, the employment numbers really are very indicative. Okay, thanks.
Mr. President. Mr. West, could you also get us unemployment figures on females and African-Americans?
I believe we collect that data, and we can get that to you. Ms. Henderson compiles that on a monthly basis.
Okay.
We can get that for you.
Mr. West, I have a question that's associated with your presentation, if you don't mind.
Yes, sir.
A few weeks ago, we asked you relative to the, we know the state receives some COVID-19 resources. resources, I believe, what was it, two million, two billion dollars approximately?
The state received 1.8 billion.
Yes, sir.
And then the state allocated portions of that to municipal government and to county governments. The allocation to the City of Mobile is 8.8 million. Now, they don't actually send cash to us. They hold that money in the Finance Department in Montgomery and make it available to reimburse the city for costs that were spent fighting COVID.
Right. And at that time, this was maybe about three weeks ago, we inquired as to whether or not, I think that the concept of giving retroactive pay was something that I thought you indicated we could not do, but the notion of potentially assigning a bonus and attributing the cost of that bonus to the drawdown we might get from the state was something that you were going to research. Have you had an opportunity to do that?
Somewhat. That issue did come up yesterday with the finance directors, and there is some legal support for a position on that. We've requested a copy of that document, and we'll certainly pass it along to you. And as you suggest, it relates to the validity of a bonus. There is law, you know, that governs our city now on issues of bonuses for, you know, previous service. And so we still don't have a good answer, but the answer is there. And so I'll get that opinion to you when I receive it. We've requested that.
Great. And Mr. Aldridge, if you could move forward with that resolution from me and Ms. Rich for next week, that would be appreciated. Okay.
Let me say one other thing about that. The cities who were present yesterday all agree that no city is going to come close to using their allocations for fighting COVID. I think the largest dollar amount we heard was a million one from one city, Tuscaloosa, and most of the others are not approaching a million dollars. We're at about eight hundred thousand. There is pressure within Congress to amend the CARES Act, which is the one that made those allocations, to allow leftover funds to be used for revenue replacement, which right now you can't do. So we are waiting cautiously to see what builds in Congress, you know, whether that effort will take place or not. If it does, of course, the balance of what's in that allocation could be used to meet some of these challenges that we've had with losses in revenue, whether it's sales taxes or whether it's issues that I mentioned, such as the cruise terminal being closed. So those two issues are probably going to go side by side for a time, as you think through those options and possibilities.
Well, I'm happy to hear that. My mind just goes back to all of the hundreds of our employees who really in the brink and at the face of a global pandemic, that we did not understand, and really up until this point, don't quite understand all of the impact, still clocked in, worked hard, got the job done, and our problem could have been so much further exacerbated by them not being in place. And if retroactive pay is not, is a nonstarter, then I'm hopeful that as Finance Director and certainly as the mayor, that if those resources are applicable to giving a bonus, a pandemic bonus, a heavy style, that that's something that this city will consider doing because so many, now there are those I know that won't qualify for it, I get it, but there are also those I know day in and day out, I can't think of a time I didn't hear on Tuesday morning my garbage truck come down the street. And those individuals could have easily taken the posture. I don't know what's out here, I don't know what I may be exposing myself to or my family members to, and so I'm hopeful, particularly with resources that we're not going to claim all of anyway, I'm hopeful that this will be an allowable use of those resources.
We'll certainly supply you with information as we gain it.
Can I ask just a little clarification, because I too echo the sentiments of people who came, which we normally call hazard pay, the time and a half, but since we can't go backwards, the bonus might be the way to look at, you know, remunerating the employees that came in to do that. That would be a state directive, or would that also come in federally when they redesign that amount of money that each state was given?
As far as I know, this would all be state law driven.
Okay. So, but to get like our cruise terminal payments, that would take a rewrite of the CARES Act.
Correct.
So maybe this council wants to write to our national leadership in Washington to urge them to please, and then maybe spell out where we have those holes in our budget because of COVID.
That's a good point.
Like really educate them.
And I will tell you this, not only the ten mayors who met yesterday, but also the League of Municipalities has made sure that there has been engagement, not only with our U.S. senators, but also with each of our congressmen in the various districts, to let them know that, you know, this is a whole lot more important to municipal government to get it done.
And you think that really is piking up there, or is it going to be after election?
It's possible. What happened was with that great jobs report last month and the stock market bounce back, there has cooled the emphasis on another CARES Act or another COVID Act. Instead, now some in Congress are looking at just amending that current CARES Act.
Yeah, like not adding additional funds, but making sure there would be things that would qualify for those funds.
That's correct.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. President.
It's no problem. As a matter of fact, Mr. Aldridge and Ms. Steinfels, if you all could be, began some work on a resolution that we could send to our congressional leaders in this respect. If the CARES Act needs modification, then let's articulate where those modifications need to come from, so that hopefully we can, what I don't want to see is any of the money go back to either Montgomery or to Washington, D.C., when we could have had good use for it here, and we've got employees that can utilize those resources here. And so if you all could work on that, it'd be much appreciated. Thank you. And thank you, Mr. West. I'm glad to hear as positive a report as we've heard, because I know that's not the case all across the state.
You are optimistic also, Mr. President. We do have challenges, but we're doing the best we can, and through judicious work from all of us, I think we're in a better position than many.
Mr. Preston.
Mr. Davis.
I would just like to make two statements. One is that the reason we're in a better position than many, not only across the state, but across the nation, is because we've had rigid fiscal discipline over the last six years, which has put in place a sixty million dollar reserve that will allow us to weather the storm. The second thing I'd say is the storm is not over. The storm is still going on, and we don't know whether it's going to get better or it's going to get worse, and we need to continue to be very fiscally conservative as we go forward until we know how all this is going to play out. Thank you.
That's right. And I would like to thank this council and our mayor for such fiscal discipline. We've got some runaways on both sides, but we've been able to work together to instill this discipline, and the citizens of the City of Mobile ought to be pleased to hear this finance report, when you compare it to some of our neighboring cities like Montgomery and Birmingham. Thank you, Mr. West. Madam Secretary of Commerce?
Adoption of the agenda?
Some move.
Second.
Will it properly move to second in the discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Appeals. We have requests for a wave of the noise ordinance on July the third from 6:00 P.M. until 9:00 P.M. on Moffett Road.
Some move.
Second.
Will it properly move to second in the discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Request for a wave of the noise ordinance on July 4th, 11th, 18th, and 25th in Langen Park and Beenville Square from 7:00 A.M. to 7:00 P.M. Minister Pope is supposed to be here today. Are you present?
Minister Pope? Yes, sir. Come on up in just for a few moments. We just want to identify you, Mr. Pope, and appreciate your efforts. I see you've signed in, asked for several dates throughout the city, particularly one in my district, I think, from 7:00 A.M. to 7:00 P.M. Did you need all, first off, give us your name and your address, if you don't mind.
Yes, good morning, everybody. My name is Tony Pope, 2566 Pleasant Valley Road. Yes, I just, I just come just to really encourage the City of Mobile. I mean, we're going through a lot, everybody's facing a lot of, you know, turmoil, but I just know what God put in me is to put it back out into the community, and that's the Word of God, and that's all I basically want to do, and I just desire the support of the city officials and the leaders of Mobile to just allow us to just go out and preach the Word. I'm not talking about protesting, I'm talking about proclaiming Jesus Christ, and that's what we're coming out, we desire to do in these areas that are listed in. And basically, we also want to go to those areas to basically help the law enforcement. I've noticed in outreach, we go out there in neighborhoods to where the drugs and the bad things are happening, and when we go out there and we stand on that corner and we proclaim Jesus and Christ crucified, there's a peace that comes over that community for that time, and we would like to do it more, you know, and it really helps the law enforcement. Matter of fact, in Baymanet, the chief of police invited us to come out, and we went into a real bad part of town in Baymanet, and the chief of police said he has never seen that place as calm and peaceful in those few hours that we was there, and that really just showed me something. So I know the power of the Word, the Word of God, and just us just standing out on a street corner, you know, in allowance and with the rules and regulations of the city to go out and just preach the Word. That's, you know, that's all we want to do.
Well, we really wanted an opportunity to put a name, or face rather, with a name on your item dealing with Beenville Square. It is listed from 7:00 A.M. to 7:00 P.M. What times are you really going to be needing?
I basically put that on there because I really didn't know what time we was going to make it out, make it out there, but normally it's around about from 12:00 P.M., no later than about 4:30, 5:00 o'clock, depending on the reception of, you know, how people receive, you know, receive, and, you know, if somebody asks for prayer, or we get into a group prayer. So basically from about 12 to 5 is normal.
Yes, sir, sounds good. I don't have any issues. Ms. Gregory, would you?
Hi, Pastor. Langen Park is in my district, so first off, I do want to thank you for selecting Langen Park, for doing this. It's quite a ministry you have going there.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Just a few questions. I know you got your permit from the Parks and Rec Department, correct?
Yes, ma'am, I got a permit saying, subject to getting the permission from the Parks Department, so I'm kind of waiting on that.
Right, thank you. You mentioned probably no more than like 12 to 4:30, 5:00 o'clock, something like that.
And that's still over, I'm just kind of like overestimated on that.
So there'll be a number of you out, actually?
Normally it's from two, from about two ministers to about three, about three ministers. It's about eight or nine of us all together.
Right. And Langen Park is a, well, Langen Park is a big place. Do you have areas set out where you intend to be, or will you be moving around, or?
Yes, ma'am. It will generally, you know, because we don't want to really just disturb anybody, we just want to proclaim God's, and I got my, the system that the Lord blessed me with, I pretty much set my speakers up four ways and kind of cut it up to a volume where it reaches out, but not blaring out and disturbing nobody. But as far, like you said, the park is, the park is big. It would be nice, over there where they have that little auditorium, it's okay over there, but there's really generally no people around, so we kind of want to be closer to where the water is, to where people really, really congregate at.
Yeah, and on Saturdays or weekends in particular, a lot of people will rent the pavilions and they bring a lot of folks, but a lot of times they bring their own music too. So as long as you are cognizant of that and don't interfere with anybody, you know, doing what they're doing with their families and that sort of thing, I don't think we have a problem with it.
Yes, ma'am.
And you've got a lot of days here, so if there are any issues, we'll be sure to contact you and let you know.
Yes, ma'am, thank y'all so much.
Sure.
Mr. President, I would like to say that I had an opportunity to speak to Minister Pope a couple of weeks ago. I gave him a call and pretty much told him that we will approve his ordinance, his waiver, excuse me, week by week, and we see, you know, results, you know, did we hear anything from the community? And as of this day, I have not received anything, and I will suggest to the other two council people in this area, he's trying to get in for next month, if they have any concerns to do the same thing, just go by week by week to approve it. But as of this day, the whole month of June, I have not received any complaints. Then some of the days, I think the first weekend, he got rained out, and the same thing might happen in July too. So if you have any concerns, I just suggest maybe just go by week by week by week, and if anything pops up, you can also contact Minister Pope, you know, the week of.
Thank you for taking on this initiative. The world could use more and more and more and more of the preaching of God's Word. I'm a big proponent of that. I'm glad we've got the times scaled down some, and, you know, if you want to work with my office to take it all over my district, I'm excited about that prospect, because we need to hear it. Every word of what you're saying needs to be heard, and so we appreciate you coming down today.
Yes, sir, thank y'all so much.
If there are no objections, then...
Are we going to, are we going to take up this one?
We can, and then I'll take the others.
And I have, I would amend, I move to amend the request or change the request so that the Beenville Square waivers would run from 12 noon to 5:00 in the afternoon.
But he's doing the same at Langen Park, right? Yeah, okay.
So all...
Is there a second?
While we're talking about, do you want to do it week to week, or just go ahead and do the full month?
I'm fine with the whole month for me.
I would just say that I also spoke with Minister Pope about his request to, for these waivers in Joe Bailey Park, and Joe Bailey Park is surrounded on three sides by houses, by homes, and he assured me that he would, you know, that he would control the volume in such a way not to inconvenience the residents of those houses, and as with a councilman small, I received no complaints. So I appreciate your work on that, Minister Pope.
Yeah, I think we go ahead and approve the full month, but, you know, if we do hear some complaints, then we'll just get back in touch with you and let you know.
And again, thank you for coming now. With proper motion, second, bad discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Request for a wave of the noise ordinance on July 4th from 3:00 P.M. until 10:00 P.M. on MacArthur Street. On July 27th, on June 27th, from 2:30 P.M. until 9:30 P.M. on River Forest Road. July the 4th, from 10:00 A.M. until 2:00 P.M. This is in Cathedral Square. And I've added this one for June 23rd, from 3:00 P.M. until 7:00 P.M. at the Raphael Sim statue. Are we doing that one or no?
I don't have a problem with that. No objections.
Okay. I have a question, though.
Ms. Rich?
Does that require our, a public safety permit, because it's a median, it's not a park? Normally, we give these waivers to, you know, parks and/or residential or business. So I'm just curious, because I wouldn't want anyone to get in any trouble after the fact. So do we know? Is public safety here?
They're outside meeting.
Oh, okay.
Well, and we'd also like for them to be safe if they're in that median area.
Right, it's small.
If they stand in... If, if they stand in the median, but if anybody spills onto the streets, we'd want to make sure that they are safe.
Well, that, that's my point about if that needs to go through the city's police department because there's a person that handles that. They're not closing the street, I get that.
Right.
Mr. President? Ms. Richardson?
We talked about that last time when there was a median, remember?
Oh, I remember. Yes, ma'am. Ms. Richardson?
People, citizens been gathering there for the past month, and the only thing the police came out to, to talk about was sound. I would just, I would just vote, vote it alone. They, they are not disturbing any traffic. So I would just...
All we're talking about here is noise. That's all we're...
Right, but I, I just don't want a confrontation after the fact that we've given the noise waiver because I don't know what other protocol, and there's probably still time, but I'm just trying to dot the i's and cross the t's.
Well, that's what they're asking us to do. That's the only reason they want us to do that. So they can, they had a bullhorn that was not making no excessive noise there, and they want to, usually we just told Mr. Pope that he could be downtown but hears, and they're saying... Right.
This is not a park.
It's in a park, but I'm saying they, almost every day they are down here there at that base of that statue.
But they got a park permit for that. So I just, I don't, apparently this happened last week, and they were told, you know, to, to please disperse because they didn't have a noise waiver, but I don't want them to find out that they also needed some kind of city from, you know, public safety. That's all.
But, but Ms. Rich, at, at this point, we, we wouldn't, that's, that's all administrative. We, we're gonna grant them the noise waiver.
Right, but we're not, we normally give two weeks, and we're not doing the two weeks. So I don't want to play into something that is incorrect. That's all.
Yes, ma'am.
And, and so I publicly will land on that.
Mr. President?
Mr. Vice President?
I would like to say what good for the goose is good for the gamble. This council had discussed about Mr. Minister Pope going to get a, a permit in the park and said that his noise waiver is subject to the permitting in the park. So if, if there's some concerns of that, you know, they got to have a permit to stay in the, this easement, whatever, I think we should put on a noise waiver is subject to if in the easement or in the permits is, you know, need to be done.
Right.
This is subject to reading all the forms.
Yeah, we can add that.
That's, that's great.
Yeah, it's, especially because normally we do these two weeks in advance. Okay.
Okay, so we've had discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Okay. Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council, Joe Ringhafer. Well, you're here now.
You, we, we want to hear all you say, so come on right there.
These are the old days. Joe Ringhafer, twelve eleven Government Street. Ladies and gentlemen, greetings. I come before you representing Raphael Sims Camp eleven of the Sons Confederate Veterans with the specific request that you return the Admiral Sims monument to us, the successors of his donors. The Sons was founded in eighteen ninety-six. The Commandeuse of the United Confederate Veterans gave the Sons the charge of the defense of the Confederate soldier's good name and the guardianship of his history. Clearly Admiral Sims' good name and guardianship of his history have been harmed by the illegal removal of his monument. Prior to the year nineteen hundred, an auxiliary of the Raphael Sims Camp eleven of the United Confederate Veterans collected funds and donated a statue of this beloved citizen of Mobile, Alabama. A veteran officer in the navies of both the old United States and the Confederate States, his achievements defending our governments are known and celebrated all over the world. His portrait graces the walls of the Alabama Room and the Town Hall of Geneva, Switzerland. English officers presented him a sword, a beautiful work of art, in admiration of his naval services and exploits. The French and the United States governments collaborated in the research of the CSS Alabama. The United States Navy has commissioned two warships in his honor, both named USS Sims. In nineteen hundred, this veteran statue was unveiled to the acclamation of Mobilians and has been proudly displayed for one hundred and twenty years. In two thousand, Raphael Sims' Sons Camp eleven, successors to the United Confederate Veterans, conducted a centenary rededication of the monument. In attendance were the Mayor of Mobile, Mr. Mike Dow, and a number of city council members, one of whom, Mr. Fred Richardson welcomed attendees at a private reception hosted by the camp before the public event. Sims' family members, including retired US Navy Captain Oliver Sims, a camp member and direct descendant of the Admiral, were in attendance. The Admiral's sword, priceless artifact, was on display. Hundreds of people attended the public rededication as the cannons of Fort Conde boomed in conjunction with those of the reenactors. Nevertheless, a recent action has intentionally voided the good faith implicit in this monument's donation. Despite his oath of office to support the Constitution of Alabama, the mayor violated our state statute protecting such...
Mr. Ringhafer.
Ma'am, sir?
Now, we got rules here. We ask that you not call any individual, any individual's name. You, you getting ready to go down, uh, we want to hear what you have to say, but, but let's not make it one side and or personal, if you don't mind.
I'm sorry. I, I didn't, I can't understand.
In other, in other words, you, you don't necessarily have to call my name. You don't have to call the mayor's name. We, we know that you feel that his action...
I just said the mayor.
But then you went on to say illegal and all of this, that and the other. If you could, let's keep it pertinent to the statue, if you don't mind.
Uh, doing my best.
Thank you.
Uh, let's see. Despite his oath of office to support the Constitution of Alabama, the mayor violated the state statute protecting such veterans' monuments, placing himself above our laws. In this he joined...
We're not gonna, there's not gonna be an opinion of the mayor breaking laws and all that stuff. Just stick to what you want with the statue, what you would like to have, and, and let's go from there. It's just the rules that we run by.
The breaking of the law disavows the gift that we gave, that our ancestors gave to the city, and that is the point in fact that I'm using.
Mr. President, I would just ask very respectfully that those opinions be taken out, that here we're just going to talk about what you are asking us to do and what you think ought to happen, and otherwise we leave the mayor and his administration out of the, out of the discussion. Thank you.
Okay. Historian Will Durant gave us this thought. From barbarism to civilization requires a century. From civilization to barbarism needs but a day. In Mobile, after a hundred and twenty years, it required but a night. Raphael Sims Camp eleven is a genealogical memorial veterans association, a 501(c)(3) charitable organization. It has contained many veterans of our wars, including World War II, Korea, Vietnam, and the recent Middle East conflicts. In particular, these men value the dignity and honor of our veterans' memorials. They instinctively understand such monuments are more than bronze and stone. They're the very soul of the gratitude and reverence civilizations rendered to those who put themselves in harm's way. Freedom and independence are not free. It is said that a culture which does not cherish and will not defend the honor of those who offer their lives for it does not deserve to survive. For many years of civic pride, our camp has maintained the island on which stood the Admiral statue. In two thousand and seven, the United States Navy sent the remains of an American Confederate sailor recovered from the CSS Alabama to the Sims Camp for interment. This confidence further qualifies our bona fides for the return of this veteran's statue, which we consider our right. The monument's removal is a violation of the good faith of its donation and an Alabama law. We honor our veterans' monuments. We do not desecrate them. We obey the law. Clearly, the city has disavowed this gift of the Sims Camp successor to the donors. Is the legitimate, the donor, I'm sorry, our Sims Camp successor to the donors is the legitimate, competent, and worthy recipient for this return. Thank you. And I'm sorry if I violated anything. I've never been stopped in the middle.
I have some questions.
Uh, Ms. Rich, and let me just state for the record that this was not singular to, to Mr. Ringhafer. Mr. Ringhafer lives in my district. I'm going to show deference to anybody who would be someone from my own district. But Mr. Hill and several others, I know Mr. Hill is a, is a attesting that we have these rules, and I'm trying hard to, to try to display them and exhibit them as evenly as we can so that we can have a very fruitful discussion as relates to your commentary.
And Mr. Chairman, just when the council's done, I do have a, a couple of statements to make for you.
Yes, sir. Mrs. Rich?
Thank you. Mr. Ringhafer, I, I know that you felt strongly about having a good community debate about the placement since the statue was removed from a location that your group was very supportive and protective of. Did you ever speak directly to the mayor about your requests that you're bringing forward?
At least how I spoke directly with the mayor was after the statue had come down.
Not prior?
That's correct. I spoke to the mayor for probably two minutes with the Public Safety Director, and then another two minutes with Mr. Woods, at which time the mayor told me, you have to understand that statue is never going back up in my administration, and I asked for possession, and he said that he didn't know how to do it legally, but we would send him the documentation that if we requested it, the city would not object.
Okay. I know that we're holding some legal documents that came to each of our offices about the ownership of the statue, and I don't think anyone doubts that the gift was given to the City of Mobile, but it was a gift because the city at the time did not purchase the monument or have it designed. It was all done by the private sector group. Now, in its evolution, being a 501(c)(3), that didn't exist in, you know, the late eighteen hundreds, nineteen hundred. So the city's position is that it's a city piece of art. I would call it art, statue, and it is an emotional piece of property, no matter how you slice it on both sides of the aisle. And so this council does have the authority with city property to, if it's no longer needed, it could be given to someone else. We do that normally with property or, or with... I don't think we've ever done art, to my knowledge. I don't think we've ever give, you know, given back art, but anything that is of value that the city has, it's up to the council to decide, you know, where it would go if it's changed or, or moved. So I think your request is genuine. It's from your heart, and it's, it's a sensitive, very sensitive subject, and I'm glad that you came down to approach this council, and I hope this council will take it under great consideration. Again, I, I believe Ricardo is going to speak, you know, on the legal aspects of the ownership. I don't know if he has anything else to add, but he's made that perfectly clear. But I don't think any of us didn't think it belonged, you know, that it was something that's in the city's inventory, so to speak. So, but thank you.
Thank you. Well, thank you for your time, and I hope that you will consider our request.
Mr. President?
Ms. Richardson, then we go to Mr. Woods.
I would just like to speak to one segment of Mr. Ringhafer's presentation when he said that Admiral Sims defended our government. I want to say from eighteen twenty-six to eighteen sixty-one, Admiral Sims defended our government. He was in the United States Navy. He went to the United States Navy Academy. He took the oath that he would swear to defend the Constitution of the United States of America. Eighteen sixty-one, he disavowed all of that, and he joined the Confederate States of America to declare war on the United States of America. I don't consider that our government. Our government was the government he was in before he advocated and joined the Confederate States of America. I'll take issue with him on that statement, our government.
Yes, sir. Mr. Woods?
So, Mr. Chairman, I want to state two things as to legality. One is that Councilwoman Rich is exactly right. Yeah, a gift by right does belong to the city, the city property. And two, the council as well within its rights and powers to be able to allocate or to, to be able to get rid of property, and that's, I don't think there's any debate here. But specifically as to the statue itself, you know, the key point here is the word dedicate, and I think that was mentioned several times. The fact that it was actually dedicated to the city remained affixed to public property for more than a ten-year period, stayed there, was maintained by the city. I don't think anybody's under disillusioned that it does not belong to the city. It would make my job a lot easier if it did not, but that's, that's the case. The other thing that I want to point out is, it's another thing Ms. Rich alluded to and something that we need to avail ourselves to is that, you know, the organization that is now saying that it belongs to them did not exist at the time, so you cannot assert a right as to dedication. I don't think that it would matter even if it was the organization that dedicated it because the documents that we have don't necessarily reference any intent that it remain at a particular location. So the last aspect of it is, and you all have the legal opinion, so I won't belabor that point. We purposely went out and got independent counsel to look at this issue, to look at both the protection of the public, protection of the statue, the protection of our police officers or any employees who may be put in harm's way. And so we were operating under a subsection that allows the public and the statue to be protected, and being moved, that's something that we could do. So at the time we moved it, that could be temporary, as you could see. The permanent removal is because we don't think we could secure it, but there are a number of other issues, both public safety-wise and public property-wise that go into that. And so it is still on public property, has not been removed from public property, and what happens to it is completely up to you all.
Can I, can I further comment? Mr. President, there was, there was one comment, if you will. There was one comment that the administration would not be opposed to returning it if that was a, and I don't know exact words, but there was a, there was such a comment that was made during the presentation. Would the administration be opposed if the, if the council, would they work with the council to return it to them if, if the council chose to do that? Would you oppose it?
You know, when the action was taken, I felt like that there was enough conversation had with certain members of the city council afterwards and beforehand, indicating that they thought that the selected place was probably worthy of its permanent home, but it's ultimately a city council's call if y'all want to do that.
Mr. President?
Ms. Richardson?
The statue was moved. The mayor moved the statue on his own volition. He did not check with the council. And where the statue goes now, I think the mayor needs to make, make a recommendation to the council. The statues, he has the statue, and whatever he wants to do with the statue, wants, wants the council to do for the statue, I think he needs to make it known, and the council can decide what, if they want to do that or not.
Do you want to know what I think should happen to it? I think it needs to stay in the History Museum.
Do you have a location in mind in the, in there?
It's up to the History Museum.
It's huge.
Well, let, let me just state for the record that I was one of the council persons that had belabored discussions with the mayor concerning the Admiral Sims statue, and I don't think that I've hidden from that, and I know that he also engaged not only with me, but with others who, who offered to him, first, our opinion that it needed to be removed, and secondarily, our opinion as to where it could potentially be placed. I have no, if, if it's his recommendation that it be placed at the History Museum, I think I'm on record in being in support of that, but I'm also hopeful that the curators there at the History Museum will make certain that as it's placed... there at the history museum will make certain that as it's placed, that it's put in its proper context so that all persons can appreciate or not appreciate its placement in the history museum.
And I'd also remind Mr. Richardson, I have a email or a text from him suggesting to me before I brought it up to him that it should be in the history museum and then a follow-up conversation that maybe we ought to consider GovQuest as a home. So, I forgot to run to a meeting.
Mr. President?
Mr. Richardson?
I don't have no conflict with what the mayor had to say.
Yes, sir.
The thing I'm saying, I want the public to hear what Mayor Stimson, what his thought was where it should go, not just it be left up with the council. And Mayor Stimson stated in no uncertain terms what he would like to see happen. I don't have no disagreement with, with what he said, but, uh, but I agree with your last comment. Uh, I think now it's going to come down to interpretation that, that, that the, the staff at the museum's going to have to, I think, uh, you know, make sure they put everything up in the right light. One thing I'm concerned with is that Admiral Sims, uh, sailed, his, his last voyage was to Cherbourg, France. And evident that, that Admiral needed some assistance on how to get over there successfully. He hired an African-American, not a slave, to help him to navigate over there. I want that in the history books. And when I got, um, I got over to England, uh, where they built the CSS Alabama, uh, they had a picture of the person that helped him navigate. When I got to Liverpool, England, I went to the International Slave Museum and I found the history of the navigator and a picture of him to get navigator. When the ship went down, he did not die with the ship. He swam to shore, got on another vessel, sailed to Liverpool where he died. I want him, his records to be right up that side, Admiral Sims, because he helped him to navigate the CSS Alabama to Cherbourg, France.
I, I've...
Mr. Davis, then I'll come down after Ms. Rich.
Thank you, Mr. President. I've been considering for some time, probably the last two years or so, uh, what the fate of the statue might be because it had become increasingly obvious that we might reach the day when, um, when its fate would be in peril. After the statue was defaced a few weeks ago, I called the mayor and I told the mayor that in my opinion, it was time for the statue to be moved and that I thought the best place for the statue would be the history museum where it could be protected and properly interpreted. So I'm 100% behind, A, its removal and B, its remaining in the history museum. Thank you.
Ms. Rich?
Um, I guess the only time I had a conversation with the mayor about the statue was I was told not to bring it up and I honored his request because he told me it would be a big public debate before anything was final on its location. So I just really want to state that publicly. And when I got, um, learned about the request of the group, um, I made it known to council as well and asked, um, Mr. Ringhoffer to then bring the information to the council because it is a item that belongs to the city and as I said earlier, it would be up to the council to help find that location, um, where it belongs. If it's the will of the council, um, that it go into the museum, I would make a request since I can't direct any city employees, although the museum is not city employees, I don't think anymore, um, be it what it may, I'll take the time to talk to the director. But I do believe that people who represent the group of the ancestry of that, um, gift to the city should also help write the narrative and that it be done collaboratively and not just, um, something where they don't get input into it if it's still going to stay in the public realm. I personally think that, um, giving the gift back, um, is probably the best recourse, um, to protect it and to make sure that it's, um, given its, um, due as far as the lineage and the culture at the time. We can't go back in time. We learn from mistakes we make in the past. So it is what it is, it was, it was cultural. I don't believe that Admiral Sims ever owned slaves. I think that's on, I think that's in his, his documents. So anyway, um, it just needed to be much more public if we're really going to deal with what's, um, kind of underlying in our community about a sense of our past history that is not resolved and it might never be resolved. But again, I'm, I'm glad that we got this publicly, um, known to the community and, um, the mayor is entitled to his opinion by all means, um, and that it was removed. It was against state law, that's very clear. Um, I believe there's a fund that's been going around, a GoFundMe account, uh, by private citizens to help pay down that, um, because the government, the state government will fine us for taking that away, um, out of the, out of the location where it was. They were pretty clear about their directive of anything more than, is it 40 years, Ricardo? That has to be re-protected?
Forty, right.
And, you know, someday that's going to be, um, something very important to another group. So just remember that. And, um, I'm just glad that we got this publicly and I don't think, I hope it's not even over because we do need to talk and debate and discuss. It's how, that's how civilized people move forward. So, thanks.
So, Mr. Chairman?
Whenever, in whatever order, it doesn't matter, but I'd just like to...
Let me get Mr. Williams first to come in.
Sure. I just want to make sure we completely, uh, beat this, uh, subject and belabor, but and be clear, I spoke with the mayor after it was rece, after it was, um, removed and it was, they asked me what my thoughts were and I told him, I said, you know what? I don't, I don't care. Uh, uh, the history museum be a fine place, but a, but a, but a place of the choosing of a piece of private property somewhere else, I wouldn't disagree with that either. It is a piece of metal. Uh, it is a piece of metal and we could do all the above. We could have a, we could have a statue in the, in the museum and the, the group could have the statue. Whether or not they're legally entitled to it, I really, you know, that's, I'm, I'm not a lawyer. I just think that as a municipality, the future of that statue will fall in, if it chooses, in the, if this council chooses, the administration chooses, in the history museum and there will be, uh, other disagreements about where it's placed, what's said. And the only thing I know is if it's not there, there won't be a future discussion about this statue, uh, that takes the time and the energy and the, and the emotions of, of our citizenry. Um, and to me, sometimes if you can put it to rest forever, then put it to rest forever. It's a piece of metal and it doesn't erase history by removing it and it doesn't make history by putting it in the museum. Thank you.
Mr. Woods?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, it, I just wanted to make, make clear since the, the horse is being continuously beat. People talk about the legality, uh, of, of this issue, so we opined several different times of where it should go, but there is one point that's being missed, but I think there was, at least in working with the attorney general's office to resolve this issue, um, we thought it better not to expend more city resources and beat this dead horse than to fight this issue on the small disagreement we had as to that section 233 that allows you to move and protect. And there's no caveats in that subsection. Um, but there's also another thing and, and this is something that we discussed and I just want to have the citizens know this, that the city has to, or has maintained the statue for quite some time and done all these different issues. So to allow or for the state to mandate that the city use its resources is an unfunded mandate. So we could have gone back and forth and fight that issue and it is, is often gets said, what are we going to do and how are we going to figure out this problem? But it just didn't, it didn't warrant that. I mean, we knew that there would be a purely civil penalty. We knew that there was an opportunity to raise funds that would not be city funds or that the council could appropriate funds. Either one could happen. It just didn't make sense to expend more resources and more time over a, a, a very important part of our history that is ultimately a, a piece of art that has emotional ties for some and it, and other emotions for others. Um, it ju, it just did not warrant it. And then what we did, what we did, what we had to do to make sure that we protected people, that includes our employees and city property. And so there are legal opposition on both sides, but we're moving forward and, because we've got other things we need to take care of. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Uh, thank you for coming down today, Mr. Ringhoffer. I'm Mr. Clark.
Antonio Moore?
Uh, ye, yes, sir. I'm from District 6. My address is 6072 Highland Circle North. And I was coming to talk about the police body cams that they wear. Um, last week that we had a demonstration out here by the old Raphael Sims statue and another officer, a sergeant responded. One of the things we noticed about the sergeant that everyone was talking about was the fact that the supervisor didn't have a body cam on. I talked to the lieutenant at the Central Police and he said that supervisors aren't required to wa, wear body cameras when they're out on patrol. And I was wanting to know that the city council does have a meeting coming up or something about reforming the city advisory council and also about public safety. And I was wanting to know is there any way that the city could require that the supervisors when they're also out on patrol to have body cams on themselves? It seems like, you know, if they require that from the lower patrol officers that aren't in a supervisor position, they should require that standard throughout all officers when they're on the road because if a sergeant pulls you over, he doesn't have a body cam. So it'd technically be either A, his word against yours, B, if you have your own camera out, or C, he would have to call another officer out there with the body cam to assist, which would be a burdensome on the rest of the citizens because now you have him pulling you over and now you have to wait for another officer to show up. So I was just trying to figure out, is there any way that it could be required in the future that, again, all officers when they're out on patrol have on body cams, not just regular patrolmen, but supervisors as well?
Mr. Chairman, I can answer that question.
Mr. Woods?
So, two things. One, we almost have to make sure that in these chambers, we have respect for the truth and that we're not saying something that can be misstated. So it is true that our current policy, if you're a sergeant above, you don't wear a body cam, but that's because the sergeants are not out actually pulling people over. That's, that, that's, that's a false narrative. So what we, what you do want is a supervisor on the scene, but to cut to the chase, we are actually looking at and reviewing all of our policy, including our body cam policies to look at what we're doing. You got to remember when we first started the body cams, it was something, that's when Director Barber was actually the chief and we were pushing forward to make sure we had capacity. We have to make sure we have capacity for one and two, we having the best use of the body cams. And then the third and last thing I'll say is, as far as the body cam policy is concerned, that, that is something that you know, that will be discussed, but that is purely within the realm of an administrative issue that we have to look at, but we definitely need input, um, I think general input from the public to see what we do and how we do it. So that's, um, that's where we are with that one.
Mr. President?
Mr. Richardson?
According to the Sogby Act, we'll be a coun, city council has the authority to set So if the council weren't to set a policy regarding body cams, there's no, nothing to prevent us from doing that. Let me just say, it is my belief that if, if an officer, I don't care what the rank he is, is patrolling the streets of the city mobile, he or she would need a body cam on. If you are relegated to a desk, stay at the desk. But if you're going to leave your desk and go police the streets of the city mobile, anything could happen out there and it'd be your word against theirs. We need to know what really happened. We spent $4 million on body cams. I think the policy ought to say, any person caught patrolling without a body cam would either be dismissed, uh, uh, some, so, something severe happening to that person for not having a body cam on. We can ill afford for our officers in such a day as this to be patrolling the streets of the city mobile without having body cams. I saw the footage. I saw the, the sergeant when he told you, I saw y'all when y'all challenged him. He said, I don't have to wear a body cam. But yet he was confronting the citizens. He was threatening to arrest the citizens and he did not have a body camera on. Uh, so, uh, it's going to be on September the 14th.
July.
Ju, I mean, July the 14th at 1:00 in this building that we, uh, plan to have a public safety committee meeting and we would like to look at all of the policies at that particular time. And from that, from that meeting, the council will decide on what, what action we ought to take. It's a lot of, we don't know, we need to know about lethal weapons, we need to know about chokeholds, we need to know about body cams. It's a bunch of things we need to know about. We're going to ask, uh, the police department to tell us and then we'll just have to go from there. We'll see what, what the policy is and we'll, we'll have to go from there. But, uh, it's going to be, um...
Mr. Richardson, if we could, let, let us amend that because I've, I've had feedback from members of the council relative to wanting to have a specific special call council meeting that you could chair relative to this issue with the community and police. And if we could have that, if that works with everybody on, uh, July the 2nd as opposed to July the 14th, we'll, we'll have enough time to make certain that the police department, our public safety director's here, all the members of council are here and, uh, and we can also disseminate it to the public, uh, hopefully in the afternoon. I would prefer, uh, maybe 1:00 or 2:00 in the afternoon so that people will have a great opportunity to come out and to hear. In, in the environment that we're in, uh, these days and times, it's important that citizens have as much confidence in the protocol, procedures and policies of our police department. And, and it may be that a bunch don't have questions, but they want to hear answers to others' questions. I know I have some. I know, uh, uh, Public Safety Director Chair has some, the community has some. This will give us an opportunity to come in without any other issue and, and hear directly from them and they hear from us as well as hear from the community.
What, what date were you thinking?
I was, I'm proposing, uh...
That's the day before a, um, recognized holiday and that's probably...
That's a Thursday.
No, just, I'm saying... It's the day before the recognized holiday. It's a Thursday.
It's a Thursday.
Why, why, why don't we just do it on July 14th at 1:00? When the public safety committee was scheduled?
I thought that was the topic of the meeting.
No, no, that's a committee meeting.
Right.
We're not having a committee meeting.
Let's just have the, let's have the special call, let's just have the special call meeting at 1:00.
I don't have nothing against...
That's fine. That's, I'm fine. Sure.
I don't, I don't have nothing against...
Keep the time in. Okay. July the 14th?
14th.
14th at, at 1:00?
Oh, we would just continue our meeting.
Yeah, we could, right, we could just continue.
We could continue our meeting.
We could recess for lunch and come back in at 1:00.
So, so at, at that meeting...
I don't even know.
Uh, that's going to be the council, it's not going to be, it's going to be the council in session.
You should do a committee.
No, he said he won't like for the city council to be in session for that.
Right.
Well, we just continue the meeting.
Well, let, let me work on the time, uh, and I'll make the recommendation because I've got some strong feedback from other council members who want to do it another particular way and I agree with them. So we'll have that worked out before we adjourn this meeting today. So we'll have that worked out before we adjourn this meeting today. I assure you. Thank you.
And Mr. Moore, before you leave, if it's okay, President, you heard that your noise waiver was granted. It was added to the agenda, and it's been granted. My concern is that I don't know if it requires a police permit, and I know you have the number of the individual that, um, at the police department, so you might wanna check because I wouldn't want any confrontation that, um, you know, puts your event at risk.
Okay, like, I actually didn't hear that was granted. Last time I talked to you, it was like, oh, I guess I waited too late to do it, so thank you for that. Um, do I need a copy of that somewhere, or?
The clerk will have it.
The clerk will have it?
Yeah.
All right, so just get her.
Can you, can you get that to him?
Get what to him?
The waiver that we granted?
Oh.
The noise waiver? For his event is today.
It's today.
Yeah. And, but we, we predicated it on needing the police permit because we're not sure, and there was no one from policing to tell us whether a median requires that.
Okay.
Because you, so, I sent you that number?
You did. I didn't call it because the discussion we had Sunday was like, well, you waited too long.
Normally, we do two weeks, but when you presented it and asked for it, it was added.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't think it would be, but thank you. Thank you for that.
Okay.
So I'm gonna call her soon as I leave.
Mr. President, before Mr. Moore leaves, I wa- I watched the video when you all were at the statue the other day, when, when the sergeant and other officers came up declaring that you all won't make it to Machenau's, and that he could hit beyond twenty-five feet, and that that was illegal. And that ordinance was passed in two oh oh eight, and it was regarding boombox ordinance. But it is, at the top of that ordinance, it does, it did say what he said. Uh, I am offering an amendment to that ordinance to exempt, uh, citizens who are peacefully protesting that twenty-five feet. I'm, I'm gonna, uh, recommend that...
Oh, that's different. A week later.
I know, that hasn't been what you've done today. But I'm saying, in the future, uh, I, I intend to amend the ordinance where people who are peacefully protesting would not be stopped saying, "I can hit you for twenty-five feet. You can go ahead on and, and say what you need to say." So I'm work, I'm working on that. I got it in the city clerk's office. Hopefully, it'll be on the agenda next week.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time.
And just come down and get it from her? The waiver?
I think she could email it to you. Did you send your application by email?
I sent it by email?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll look for that email and...
Okay.
Thank you.
But please check with the police department about seeing whether they need to also grant you permission.
I will. We'll go do that right now because I didn't know, but thank you.
And, and members of the, of the council and Madam City Clerk, if you all could check for July the ninth at four o'clock, you all could check for July the ninth. You don't have to say, let me know now, but between now and, and our time to adjourn, if you could let us know, that would, that would be a good time for us.
For what?
For the special call meeting to deal with this particular issue.
I'm not sure four o'clock in the afternoon's gonna give us enough time.
No, four o'clock on the ninth.
On the, on the ninth?
Four o'clock in the afternoon.
Yes.
Afternoon of the ninth.
And there'll be agenda items to approve at that time?
One item.
One item, dealing with, with, we're gonna hear from the police department, hear from the community, and then they'll hear from us.
For the action of...
Subsequent meetings will have those.
Well, why are we starting so late in the day?
You mean to discuss body cam policy? Is that what you're...
More than that.
I don't, I'm, I'm really, I'm trying hard.
I don't think the agenda item that was called up, I think it was just general...
Right.
Discussion and hearing from the community.
That's right.
But four o'clock in the afternoon's a little late...
That's late.
...to be getting started.
Well, it's, it's, it's intentional in some sense because we want the public to be able to be here. We want working people, hopefully, to get off at five and still be able to make it down here, to be able to hear and also have some input. I mean, we could easily have it at ten thirty and have the same crowd we normally have. If we're gonna have a special call meeting intending on hearing from the public, then we need to, we need to inconvenience ourselves enough to hear the public. But, but I don't need a, a pimp. Just saying, thank you. So, uh, so let's, let's work at four o'clock, it doesn't happen often, and give the people an opportunity to come down. This, this is a pub, this is a very important issue that is near and dear to a lot of people in all of our communities, and we need to get, get the discussion right, in my opinion.
We'll make a, we'll make a public announcement with the exact time and place. It may, it may vary little, but we'll, we'll make a public...
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Williams.
Mr. President?
Mr. Richardson?
I would like for Mayor, and I would like for you to issue a statement to the media stating that, uh, and that we are going to, that, that a special meeting, a council meeting is gonna be called on the ninth, four o'clock, and in lieu of that, the Public Safety Committee meeting will be canceled in lieu of the ninth meeting. All of those issues will be taken up at the Public Safety Committee meeting, as can all citizens as issued in any aspect of Public Safety to meet to come at the same, come here. Deidre, I would like for you to put that on all of our agenda, the July the ninth, four o'clock. At, at the end of the... You don't want to add it to yours best?
No, I'm, I'm just saying, we have to have an agenda. I mean, we have a call and meeting, we have an agenda, so we have to have what the topic is.
Uh, not today.
No, we don't.
You'll have one.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
On what subject? On, on body cams?
The reason, the reason I wanted to be a committee meeting or a, or a full council meeting instead of a committee meeting is this requires the administration to be here. It requires us to be here, so much as the law is written that way.
But we can ask for administrative...
There'll be a roll call taken. This is, this is absolutely important, that we also make it available to a, a different pop, a, a different part of our population, the ones that are working, the ones that don't make it here on ten thirty, that we also not be ended by some other restraint. This is, this will be our place of duty for that day, at that time.
I would start it a little later.
I, I totally agree with you, Mr. Williams.
Well, a question though, are we going to have a specific agenda item, or are we just going to kind of open it up to discuss public safety in general terms, or how will that work?
Right. But we, we'll have a greater outline of that as we get a little closer to the ninth. And if you have any input you'd like to offer, please, please let us know.
And I would do it after six, six thirty, so that it's truly after work. That's your intent.
Then, Mr. Richardson, come right back.
Okay. You, you're too bad? Okay.
Either, either way.
No, I was gonna say, we should, if, if the intent is to make sure that people can come, of course, not everybody works the clock like that, but usually after six or six thirty, most of us do our district meetings in those hours, so just saying, it would be good. Four o'clock is still tough for people, you know, that are working eight-hour jobs.
Mr. President, I, I also would like for you to ask any council member to submit to you any topic they want to add to their, add it to that agenda, because I got, I have a number of them. And, and other council members probably have in their mind what they would like to see discussed at this meeting, and I think, um, that those also ought to be submitted to you, and we can have all down there.
And then we'll make certain that...
The administration can have...
Administration and our law enforcement professionals will have all of, of those questions.
Yes.
No, no problem. If you all could get that in, it would be certainly appreciated.
Not on the sixteenth, it's the sixteenth.
And Mayor, I need to see you right after the, the meeting, please. Thank you.
And you're saying July ninth?
July the ninth.
Right, there is no Planning Commission meeting that day. It's the next one, next Thursday.
Great.
We, we're gonna form the time up shortly. Thank you, and thank all of you, one of the hardest-working councils in the United States of America.
Let the church say amen.
Madam City Clerk?
Reggie Hill has signed in to address the council on ordinance zero-two-zero-one-five, um, resolution zero-eight-two-four-nine, zero-eight-four-three-six, zero-eight-four-four-zero, thirty-five-four-four-four, zero-one-four-five-one, zero-eight-four-five-five, and four through All in five minutes.
Ye- yes, sir.
Uh, Mr. President, members of the council, in the absence of our mayor, to our city attorney, citizens, stakeholders of Mobile, good morning. Reggie Hill, one thousand seven, Center Street. Before I begin my remarks, I want to commend the, well, thank rather, the city clerk's office for their transparency in getting the citizen engaged with this meeting. I also want to commend distinguished young men, and I see them on the agenda today for their service continuing in this community. We see where there are various agencies with these type of contracts in the city that are not yielding any of those type of results, so I want to thank them for their service that they're doing within the city. Also, the meeting on the ninth, if we could just discuss chapters thirty-eight and forty-six, that would be everything that we need to cover, the Mobile Municipal Code, chapter thirty-eight and forty-six. Every single thing that everybody's come down here, talked about, that's what we can find, that's where we can find it, rather. If we look at zero-two dash zero-one-five on today's agenda regarding the race, I had a conversation over the weekend with my father about the differences between race during his generation of growing up and, and, um, race, the race issue now in my generation of being a young adult. And we basically had a good debate about that idea. I think it might even be worse now. I told him I would rather be able to see those signals and signs in the forefront that let me know that you didn't appreciate who I was, whereas now we have this blind idea of racism. So I want us to really think about this while we're thinking about removing this terminology and then just replacing it with this idea of ethnicity, because we're still gonna be labeling people the way that they've been defined before, and those strongholds could possibly still be in place. Uh, we learned even just this morning that there are contracts that are being given out with organizations who aren't even certified. So we don't know what could have potentially been a reason for others to get different privileges, and this is something that could definitely dive into color. Uh, we also see that, uh, we don't have, we don't receive proper documents from a municipal court in relations to this, and yet we're still ready to just move forward on this kind of idea of, of it not being as deep of issue that it actually is. So I think that we really need to look into that. Um, at zero-eight-two-four-nine, uh, we have thirty-one thousand, forty-five thousand fifty cent being spent on virtual, uh, for virtual bond hearings, whereas if anyone looks into the fourteenth Amendment to the United States Constitution, uh, we could see where we could add signature bonds, and this again is in chapter thirty-eight, which should be at this meeting, where individuals who particularly are not non-violent offenders would not have to even sit in jail. I've expressed this many a times, other two million-plus people that are incarcerated in this country, more than four hundred thousand of them are because they can't make the bail or they don't have a proper hearing. And we see that we're thirty percent of a capacity here in Mobile alone, and I'm very sure that majority of that is because of people who are not having an opportunity to bail. Look at zero-eight-four-three-six, sixty thousand and thirty-two dollars for a tractor for Azalea City Golf Course. Now, mind you, I was the first black to make the golf team at Murphy High School, so I'm very, very in, in ti- in time and in line with things being taken care of at the golf course. However, I believe that we're gonna do this, we need to have that same level of enthusiasm in our community centers where we're allowing technology and business-based matters to be added into those places with that same level of resources. Uh, we look at zero-eight-dash, uh, four-forty, um, I want to ask this question, is this in connection to resolution zero-eight-two-four-nine, um, where we're having the, the video materials mounted, and if not, what would be the use of this video recording server? And I ask that you please hold my time, Mr. President.
No, no, sir, the time's not holding.
Well, I mean, y'all are wasting the time not responding.
No, Mr. Hill, we're gonna have to ask, we're gonna have to, we have your question, we're gonna have to ask the appropriate department official.
I get the rules, sir. I'll continue if we don't have an answer.
Yes, sir.
If we look at thirty-five-dash-four-four-four, uh, where the public finds criteria on authorized, where can the public, excuse me, find criteria on authorizing lease agreements with the city for use, um, or lease of property? Uh, we, I'm sure that we probably won't have an answer for that today, so I hope that someone will respond, but as you know, I've been submitting these questions for years and haven't gotten a response. Uh, I want to say kudos to the council for, uh, section fifteen of the agenda. Those CIP improvements are definitely necessary. Um, I hope that we'll be able to get some type of information that shows an overview of how those resources are being allocated per district and what projects are gonna be done with priority. Um, what is the baseline service agreement specified in resolution zero-one-dash-four-five-one? Um, and if there's a cost, what is that cost? So again, I hope somebody can answer that, and I hope the people will look up what these are, because these are city dollars being used, uh, in this. And then in oh-eight-four-five-five through four-sixty, to sum it up, because I know my time is winding down, we are going to spend seven-hundred-and-thirty-three-thousand, eight-hundred-and-twenty dollars, seventy-six cent on some equipment. What we learned today that we have one shared bucket truck. Now, I don't know all the practices of the bucket truck, but I know at least they can replace lights within the city, and there are areas that do not have lights, and so we have a, a means to spend seven-hundred-and-thirty-three thousand. I would love to know what is the rationale behind that and the justice for that, because we need to allocate those resources in place.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for your time to speak.
That's your time, Mr. Hill. Thank you. And Madam City Clerk, we do have a, an executive session that's waiting on us, so if we could expedite the rest of the, uh, meeting, it'd be appreciated.
Okay.
Ordinance is held over, is zero-two-zero-one-five, ordinance eliminating and replacing the word "race" on City of Mobile official forms and documents.
Motion to move to two weeks.
Second.
Probably moved to second in the discussion.
Can we have that date called out, please? The two weeks, I'm sorry. Make a note publicly.
Two weeks would be, um, July seventh.
Thank you.
Probably moved to second in the discussion. If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Fifty-seven-zero-one-six, ordinance to establish procedures and policies for the vacation or closure of any street, alley, or dedicated public right-of-way.
Move delay over six weeks.
Can we get that date?
Second.
Been properly moved to second in the discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
August fourth. Eighty-seven-zero-one-seven, ordinance deeming property at seven-twenty Museum Drive, not now needed for public or municipal purposes in authorizing a lease between City of Mobile and St. Augustine LLC for parking area.
Somebody? Probably moved to second in the discussion. If not, all in favor?
I'll call second. I don't think there was a second. You got it?
Okay, great. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Consent resolutions held over, zero-eight-four-two-nine, approved purchase order to Atlantic Video Corporation for eighteen mobile cart-mounted conference systems for remote testimony.
So moved.
Probably moved to second in the discussion. If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Um, if there are no objections, I'll take all of these together. Resolutions held over, zero-one-four-three-four, authorized intergovernmental agreement with Mobile County Commission for resurfacing, restoration, and rehabilitation of Soli Road from three-notch Corner Road northward to Cottage Hill Road. Zero-eight-four-three-five, approved purchase order to Locution Systems for annual software license and maintenance agreement. Zero-eight-four-three-six, approved purchase order to Tumi Equipment for a tractor for the Azalea City Golf Course. Zero-eight-four-three-seven, four-three-eight, approved purchase orders to NEC Corporation for, of America for annual maintenance of fingerprint ID system and emergency equipment professional to replace pump in fire pumper truck. Zero-eight-four-three-nine is approving an item-based bid for electrical and traffic supplies. Zero-eight-four-four-zero, approved purchase order to CDW Government for video recording server with accelerated storage card. Twenty-one-four-four-one and four-four-two are granting contracts with Dell Consulting for Spanish Plaza lighting upgrades and with James H. Adams and Sons Construction Company for Cottage Hill Road culvert repairs at Milhouse Creek. Twenty-five-four-four-three, grant easement to Alabama Power Company to replace primary conductors from Plaver West to Lawrence and North to Esler Street, Mobile Civic Center. 35444, authorize a lease with the Distinguished Young Women for the Quigley House on Government Street. 6445, approved settlement agreement and release of claims, Kenneth Guyton.
So moved.
Probably moved in second, end of discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I am, it's passed.
CIP resolutions being introduced, 21448 through 21450.
And these said CIP resolution will be held over for one week by council rules.
Resolutions being introduced for the first time, 01451 through 21464.
And these resolution will be held over for one week by council rules.
Call for public hearings, 41465, call for public hearing to rezone property at 1073 Bernice Hudson Drive, south side of Bernice Hudson Drive, 194 feet west of Quigley Street from R1 and R2 to R1, scheduled July 21st.
So moved.
Second.
Probably moved in second, end of discussion. If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Announcement.
Mr. Williams?
No, thank you.
Mr. Gregory?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. An update on the library, I received an email from the interim director, and, uh, they are planning, unless something changes, they are planning to open again on July 6th. They were waiting for the state's safer-at-home, uh, order to expire, so they are looking at reopening the library. Of course, there will be some, uh, guidelines put in place to keep everyone safe, but they are looking to reopen on July 6th. The, uh, library in my district, the Moore Branch, uh, has some new flooring going in. We are trying to, um, do some patchwork where the, um, old reference desk was, um, when they took it out, it left a, a big, uh, mess, if you will, so they are putting in some replacement flooring there, uh, at the Moore Branch. And also, you all have gotten an email from the Distinguished Young Women, just to make sure that everybody in the community knows because of COVID-19, the Distinguished Young Women program will not be able to take place as it normally is, as far as the, the show itself. So, if you would like to watch, it's going to be virtual on the 25th, 26th, and 27th at 7 o'clock PM on their website. It's free, um, they just, um, encourage everyone to, to watch online if possible so that they can, you know, still see that we have the Distinguished Young Women program here in Mobile, that it has not gone away. We just have to do things differently.
Mr. Vice President?
Oh, thank you, Mr. President. Just would like to thank, um, the, uh, mayor and then some of the administration, um, the neighbors and all the contractor that came out on last Thursday for official groundbreaking of, um, Baltimore Street. It was a great event, and, um, it was also a beautiful day, and again, I'd like to thank everyone that came out and participated. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Richardson?
Yes, sir, Mr. President, real, uh, Mr. President, real quick, I would just like to thank, um, Mr. Chris Aldich for his, um, work on the race ordinance. He's done, uh, he's just, um, made what appeared to be most complicated, um, he's made it most simple, and we're looking forward, uh, to taking all that up in, in two weeks. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, I had passed out to council a directive that came in from the Alabama, um, Health Department, which our local county health department also adheres to, and we did not take up the pyrotechnic, um, contract about fireworks, but there is a strong recommendation that the city not do a fireworks event, and I just would like to say that that information is, um, will be digested in the next week from the council, and I urge them to either call somebody with the Health Department if they have questions as to the reasoning, and again, it's, um, if we, uh, don't do it, it would be a disappointment, no doubt, but these are very strange circumstances with a health issue that we've never dealt with before, so just want to let the public know that. And I, I've been asked about making masks mandatory, and maybe it's because I live with a physician, so I get a lot of those kind of comments from people, and, um, my answer to, to individuals is I wait for the medical community, our Health Department, or physicians in our town to address that issue and give us a, a pathway on whether something should be mandatory when it comes to dealing with COVID. So, I, I'll take my directive from them.
Mr. Davis?
No announcements.
And I certainly appreciate all that Mr. Richardson just said relative to the, to the fireworks, and I hope that same level of sentiment and agreement is in place when it comes to holding large rallies in the hearts of District 2 in the very near future. I hope the same sentiment is expressed, 'cause I will be expressing it, as we, of course, as it relates to anyone making a request to hold a large spell rally in the heart of my council district. I hope the same sentiment is, is observed. Uh, that, that concludes my announcements. Do I hear a motion?
Sir?
Well, we need to go into, uh, executive session.
Yes.
Got to call it.
Oh, okay.
Uh, Mr. President, this, uh, the matters to be discussed in this executive session fall into a security matter, which is under subsection A, for of the Open Meetings Act exception, and there may also be, if y'all want to, a litigation matter which also qualifies, uh, for the exception and the whole deal, I think, 30 to 45 minutes, and you may also want to say whether you're going to reconvene afterwards or not.
I don't think we'll be reconvening, so, uh...
I move we meet in the executive session and that we do not reconvene afterwards.
Second.
We're probably moved to second, end of discussion. Do we need a roll call, Madam City Clerk?
Yeah, I think we need a roll call.
President Manzi?
Aye.
Vice President Small?
Aye.
Councilmember Richardson?